Hello, everybody. Welcome. My name is Ricardo Cabrera. I am representing today the Latino Chamber of Commerce of Boulder County. And we are having our Latino talk today. And we're going to be talking with our county commissioner candidates, which you can see on the screen. Before we start, I would like to invite Pete Salas, our chairman for the Latino Chamber, to say a few words for us, and then Betty will follow translating that into Spanish. So Pete.
Thank you, Ricardo. Just a few words. I want to thank the candidates for taking time off. I know it's been a really bad, a very hectic schedule, I know, the last few weeks. And you're wrapping things up here this weekend for the primaries. So so thank you for agreeing to participate. Just a couple of words. The Latino Chamber, I want to read our vision statement for the Latino Chamber. So everyone's familiar with it. It's on our webpages. With is to build strength, build strength and promote the interests of the Latino business community. Our mission is to maximize the Latino economic development and job creation through advocacy and programs that generate success and value for the Latino business community. That's that's our overall mission. I'll say that currently, you know, the Chamber was on a real severe decline the last few years, lacking focus and leadership. And in 2019, the Chamber was reborn. And I can't say enough about the group of people that I have the privilege of working with on the Chamber Board, a group of talented, young people who have more energy than I than I thought we could. So I just want to thank them. And again, thank you. Thank our audience that's out there. This will be, I think, a very meaningful discussion specific to our Latino business community. Thank you.
Hola, buenas tardes a todos. Como ya escucharon a nuestro presidente de la cámara de comercio latina, nos acaba de dar unas palabras y donde agradece los candidatos por su tiempo y su interés en participar en este evento. Muchas gracias, candidatos. Y Pete también mencionó que la misión y el objetivo de la cámara de comercio es apoyar al desarrollo económico de la comunidad latina, en especial de los negocios. Y que la cámara pasó por tiempos de crisis antes del 2019, cuando resurgió de las cenizas. Y ahora es una cámara muy muy fuerte, con gente nueva, con mucha ímpetu, que tiene muchas ganas de apoyar a los negocios latinos del condado. Y ahora sí, amigos, empezamos el evento. Hasta luego.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Betty. Thank you. Okay. So before we start, I would like to take a moment to introduce our county commissioner candidates that are going to be answering five questions. So we'll have five questions for you guys. We are going to give you 90 seconds each to answer these questions. I will let you know within 10 seconds of your time is that your time is about to be up. And then at the 90 second mark, I'm going to click mute for everybody. So it's a hard start. So besides that, let me introduce in alphabetical order. Cindy Cochran, District One Republican. Claire Levy, Democrat, District One. We have Jonathan Singer, Democrat, District Two. And then we have Marta Lochemin, Democrat, District Two as well. These rules were submitted by Latino Chamber members, board of directors, and Latino Business Community members as well. So I hope you enjoy your time. I am going to now start by giving each one of you guys 90 seconds to introduce yourselves. Let's start with this. I am going to click mute all. So you guys are all going to go and mute. And let's start with Cindy. You can click unmute yourself, and then you have 90 seconds to introduce yourself. Okay? So with that, Cindy, please go ahead. You're muted, Cindy. Cindy, you're muted.
Got it. Okay. Well, I am Cindy Cochran, and I have a PhD in reading. I have had a lot of Hispanic, what would you say, encounters throughout my life. And I'd like to share a few versus my biography. When I was in high school, I loved my Spanish class. And I don't know, I think I kind of thought myself a closet someone from Mexico. But I'm not really, not culturally, but I would have loved to have been. I love the culture. And when I was in high school, I also was asked to help during a political campaign for the student council president, because I could bring together, though, the elite town kids and where I lived, the kids from out of town in a more agricultural area, many of them who had ethnic backgrounds. And so I was asked to do the speech for him. I taught migrant education in Longmont way, way, way back in the day when the old Columbine School was the real Columbine School. In that class, I had a very sad situation where one of my students, it really broke my heart. He was a, he said, Ms. Cochran, I'm a special ed student back in Texas. And he was the smartest student. And it really broke my heart. And I really, he wanted to learn. He had.
There you are. 90 seconds. Turn it off. Thank you very much. Jonathan, please go ahead.
All right. Well, first of all, thank you so much to the Latino Chamber. It has been such an honor to be able to attend so many of your events over so many different years. And it has been a vital part of our community. You know, I've been in the legislature for the last eight years. And you have to pick and choose which issues you care most about. And so I focus mostly on people. I started out with a bill dealing with wage theft to hold irresponsible employers accountable when they steal the wages of their employees. And after eight years, we were finally able to pass a bill to hold those employers accountable and bring the business community finally on board with us. Too many of those folks who were affected by wage theft come from our immigrant refugee community. And I'm proud of what we were able to do. I was also able to work with the business community to expand our immigrant driver's license program. And last but not least, when the Department of Labor was using laws in very esoteric ways to hurt unintentionally, oftentimes, business owners who are people of color, I was able to work administratively and then legislatively to help keep those businesses open, including businesses here in Longmont. My hope is, is that we can continue to work together in this new fashion as your next county commissioner. And I look forward to the conversation today. And I want to thank each and every one of the people who have joined us today for making.
Thank you, Jonathan. Marta, where did you go next, please?
Buenas tardes a todos. Me da mucho gusto estar aquí con ustedes y gracias por la participación. Thank you, Latino Chamber, for bringing us all together. My name is Marta Lochemin. I live in Longmont. I'm running this seat, District Two seat, as was already shared, which is part Longmont Lions and Allen's Park. Thirty percent of the city of Longmont where I live looks like me, walks life like me, and is perceived like me. And I have, for the last 28 years around Boulder County, been involved in projects and programming and creating curriculums, both for our students in St. Brain Valley School District, for our teachers, professional development, for curriculum for our adult learners, all connected to our Latino community and also the broader scope of how do we answer this question of addressing racial equity, addressing the barriers to access, and addressing the opportunities with institutionalized change. And I have done that over my career in banking, in finance, in mortgage, in real estate, and as a consultant for family and community engagement. I am proud to be a part of this conversation because I was one of the community members who, back in the early 2000s, put together the Longmont Latino Strategic Plan, that is now the Longmont Multicultural Action Committee. I sat with the city of Longmont as a volunteer and oversaw that budget line for the city and brought together Housing and Health Group and ran that committee for almost a decade. And we were also the impetus for this chamber for the Latino community here locally. So all of my work has been local focused, supporting families. And I'm glad everyone's here to have this conversation and and learn more about this as candidates. My website's Marta2020.org.
Thank you, Marta. Claire, can you go next?
I'm happy to. Thank you. My name is Claire Levy. And I also want to thank the Latino Chamber of Commerce of Boulder County for bringing us all together to share our background and our thoughts about the future of Boulder County. I have lived in Boulder County since 1986, approaching 35 years here. I practiced law, land use law, for 25 years on the county level, doing local government work. I represented House District 13 in the legislature, got elected four times, served for seven sessions, and the House District 13 is Boulder, Gilpin, Clear Creek, Jackson, and Grand Counties. I then became the Executive Director of the Colorado Center on Law and Policy, which is a nonprofit advocacy organization that works on behalf of low-income Coloradans. And in that role, I was on the steering committee of the minimum wage campaign, which was the only piece of good news in November of 2016, as we watched in horror as a racist xenophobe got elected. I have been active throughout my life in Boulder County on the issues that I think affect the people of Boulder County the most, preserving open space, creating affordable housing through Boulder Housing Partners and the Boulder County Housing Authority, working for smart land use policies that support people in their communities, increasing access to human services, and working very hard on criminal and juvenile justice reform to end mass incarceration and men.
Thank you, Claire. Okay, let's see. This is working out well. Did you guys were able to hear the knock? Well, no, no, you couldn't hear the knock. Okay, so I'm going to say out loud 10 seconds then, so you can hear it better. All right. So with that, guys, let's start with our first question. Just remember, I will read the questions to you guys as we go along, so you don't have to memorize it, you know, between now and then. John, you're going to be the first one to answer this time. And John, what is your experience working with the Latino businesses of this community?
I'm glad you brought up that question. You know, it really started with showing up at Latino Chamber events and before that, Longmont Chamber events, and sitting down and listening. And I'm going to give you just one, one example. And I talked a little bit about it in my opening statement. But the Department of Labor was fining people tens of thousands of dollars on paperwork errors. And that was never the intent of the bill as it was written. And instead, people were being forced to close their doors. And so I sat down and I was able to work with a Latino-owned business, their attorney, and the Department of Labor to actually create solutions that not only helped them stay in business, but helped tons of other businesses be able to stay in business as well. That's not the only story. That's not the only case. I'm grateful to get dozens of phone calls and text messages every year, reaching out, sharing information, and broadening the conversation in a way where we can pass bills that actually affect entire populations of people. So I'm going to leave it at that and reserve the remainder of time for the other questions.
All right. Thank you, John. Okay, Marta, you can go next. What? Hold on a second. Okay. What is your experience working with the Latino business community?
Sure. And I don't, I don't remember if the initial question had local or not, but I'll answer both of those pieces because I have had and taken the great opportunity to work both locally on boards and also nationally. And one of those specific experiences here locally is in partnership with Longmont Startup Week, where about four years ago now, on that particular startup week, I was asked, along with some other community groups, to create a Spanish-speaking, basically a Spanish-speaking track and education for our Longmont Startup Week in an attempt to make that a bilingual event. And it would have actually been the first one in the country to be bilingual the second time we did it. But that year, then, we met with and presented and worked with different local business owners. And then from that, had a request from Spanish-speaking women, specifically here in Longmont, asking for continued supports. And we developed a program called Las Lettres. And I was one of the coordinators and ran that for another year in a monthly event. From a local perspective, or from a national perspective, I should say, I've taken the opportunity to work for the Stanford Latino Entrepreneurship Program and been a mentor for what is really, really important, critical from a national lens and here locally is this idea of
10 seconds.
of actually building our businesses, because unfortunately, the deficit lens gets looked at and used also in the world of business, and we have more opportunity.
Okay, so let's see. Claire, you can go next. Thank you. The question again is, what is your experience working with the Latino business community?
So thank you for the question. And I am going to answer that very honestly and just say, confess to having little to no experience working with the Latino business community. And in my, my legal career, I didn't have that opportunity. My house district actually is one of the whitest districts, house districts, in the state of Colorado. And and then in just my, my community activists and legislative life, it wasn't an area I focused on. I focused my efforts actually on behalf of, of workers and people who have been disadvantaged in this society. And one of the things that I'm most proud of having passed when I was in the legislature was an amendment to the Colorado Anti-Discrimination Act that allowed people to sue small employers, those with employees of 15 and fewer, for discrimination in employment. It took me three tries to do it, and I was very proud of having gotten that passed. So I have really focused my efforts on increasing the minimum wage, on worker rights, on fighting misclassification of employees that deprives them of access to benefits.
10 seconds.
And and I look forward, though, in my future role as a county commissioner, to working with the Latino community.
Well, thank you for that. Perfect timing. Okay, Cindy, you are next. The question is, what is your experience working with the Latino business community?
I don't work with the Latino business community. However, many years ago, when I first came to Colorado, I worked, as I had mentioned, with a lot of the Latinos in the migrant programs. I was a part of the first bilingual, bicultural program we were trying to get started at the University of Colorado. Before it was actually started, I was, was trying very hard to get that going. So I have always been a proponent. Now, in terms of business, I have have an educator background. But I am now starting a business. And I do, I am trying to get someone from Central America here to work with me. I met that person in Longmont through someone that I do know has a business in Longmont, who is Latina. And so I met it through her. And I've had that struggle of working with the government. It is, it is not very easy trying to get the forms all filled out so that I can get her here. She has unique qualities. And I'm finding it's a real challenge to, to find the people and get someone who's Spanish-speaking, who has the culture of Central America, who can be a model for my business. And so and I've got a lot to learn. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. Thank you very much. Okay, so I think that covers everybody for question number one. Thank you for your great answers. And for question number two, we have, we're going to start with Marta this time. Marta, would you be in favor of increasing the county economic vitality funding to the Latino Chamber proportionate to what other local chambers receive?
Well, that sounds like a very specific question. What I will say is that I believe, so I'm self-employed. And I think what is such a unique perspective of being self-employed, for the last 20 years, I've been self-employed. I'm also a single mother. I have two kids. And self-employment, which is very connected to where we are now with employment, just in general, but also county employers being pushed to contracts. And the way that work is really going to look, I believe, after COVID and once we start the rebuild, why is that really important? Because self-employed people like myself, we don't get benefits. We don't have retirement accounts. We don't have sick days. We don't have health insurance. There are no benefits. And so that perspective is really important when we look at employer needs. And how do we look from a county commissioner role that's administrative, it's managerial, it's governance? How do I use that experience to support workers and address some of these other worker issues? From the standpoint of what that also brings to me is the self-employed entrepreneurial lens to determine how can we in the future work with more small business initiatives like the Latino Chamber? And that is absolutely on my radar, coming from my experience and my lived background.
Good. Thank you for that. With that, Claire, you are next. And I'll read the question again for you. Would you be in favor of increasing the community, the counties, sorry, the county economic vitality funding to the Latino Chamber proportionate to that of other local chambers?
So I guess I'm going to have to assume from the question that the county does fund other chambers. I wasn't aware of that. So I guess that, I guess that's a given. I, you know, I think I probably would be. But I guess I would also have to say at the same time that, given possible funding limitations, I don't even know that it's appropriate, that appropriate for the county to be funding chambers of commerce. I don't know what the county gets in return. I mean, I guess I'd have to know a little bit more about what the county gets because I really believe in, in, in funding people and helping people in need. And the county's primary role, that one of their few absolute minimum statutory obligations is to administer human services programs. And so to the extent that funding is tight, I think that, I think that funding economic development may not be the highest priority for me as a county commissioner. It would be funding affordable housing. It would be funding childcare assistance to try to help our, our childcare workers, many of whom are Latinx and undocumented and are subject to exploitation. So it would be funding more community-based programs. However, to the extent that the county does fund chambers of commerce, I certainly would think that we would want to do that on equitable basis.
Excellent. Thank you for that, Claire. Let's see, Cindy, you are next. And the same question for you. Would you be in favor of increasing the county economic vitality funding to the Latino Chamber proportionate to what other local chambers receive?
Mute here. Number one, when I first heard that, it's like, did I hear that correctly? That you don't, because I'm a little blown away that this has not occurred previously with all the talk we hear about balancing everything. So that was my first reaction. That yes, definitely, without a doubt. As a startup, small business of my own, without a business background, I know how important getting that early funding is. Even more important, getting that mentoring. I had to actively seek out people. I went to the Boulder Chamber, didn't get the support I needed. I was able to find it with the Naturally Boulder Group, who helped me. And then when the Boulder Chamber found out I was not getting the support I needed, they actually came to my rescue. But I have had, you know, good encounters and good help from them. But it's, to me, it's vital. It's vital that if you want to start a business, keep a business going, which in turn helps out your county by giving you a better tax base, you need to help these people. And it should be fair, without a doubt, for everyone, for every ethnicity, for every, every group.
10 seconds.
I'm done.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Good. Let me do my timer over here. Okay, so with that, John, you're next. And the question again is, would you be in favor of increasing the county economic vitality funding to the Latino Chamber proportionate to what other local chambers receive?
So the short answer to your question is yes, it should be proportionate. And that's an easy question for me to answer in, in those terms. But Ricardo, I'm going to ask you a question. And if it takes up some of my time, that's okay. Are you talking about the county economic development vitality dollars or the city of Boulder's economic? Because we can't control what the city does, except to be a loud voice and a strong advocate. So are we talking city or county here, Ricardo?
I'll let Pete answer that question for you.
Jonathan, the, the county has an economic vitality fund. It's approximately $176,000. It's distributed across the board to chambers of commerce and economic development groups in, in the county. So it's just, it is just Boulder County.
Okay, that's helpful. So I used to work for the Office of Economic Development when I was a county worker in the city and county of Denver. This is critical when we talk about things like Green New Deal and bringing employees and employers together. We have a workforce development center in Boulder County where we should be connecting employees and employers, especially in a tough economic time, to make sure that they don't need those safety net programs that the county is responsible for if they don't need them. So this is an opportunity that I think we have, and proportionality is proportionality. This is part of, part of what equity should look like. So I appreciate the question. Thank you, Pete, for the clarification.
Well, thank you, John, for that. Good. So with that, we are done with question number two, and we can move on to the third question. Thank you, guys, for everything. This is very enlightening for me as well, because I need to hear what everybody has to say. Okay, so with that, question number three, we're going to start with Claire this time. So question number three, knowing that it will take years to recover from the COVID effects in our community, how do you envision using your position to assist the Latino businesses to recover from the disproportionate impacts of COVID-19 towards this sector?
I think, I think it's going to be a tough thing for us to come back from. And I think one of the hardest things that our community is facing is, is what? Well, it's actually nothing new that we haven't known already, but it is the disproportionate effect of health disparities on people of color, of working in low-wage jobs, of people of color, service sector jobs where people are exposed to unhealthy working conditions. And that we really have to rebuild our economy from top to bottom and bottom up. I guess this really is my preference, in a more equitable way, in a, in a way that allows us to serve the needs of people and, and to, you know, not, not favor large business over small business, which so much of our tax policy does. So I think as we recover, I think what I would want to do is really know more about what the challenges are that are specifically facing Latino communities and Latinx businesses, know what those challenges are, and know what the county really can do to help them. I know we've, we've talked in our last forum a lot about the property tax burden that small businesses face. And, you know, when you don't come from deep pockets and a lot of cash reserves, a small increase in property tax can be the end of you. So I think, you know, I think that I would want to really look at how we can relieve the property tax business and the, and the business personal property tax on Latinx-owned businesses and on the employees of those businesses, making childcare more affordable, because again, for, to have workers who can show up and pay attention, their kids need to be taken care of. So, you know, I go back again.
Thank you. Okay, so here we are. So let's see, Cindy is next. Cindy, here is the question again. Knowing that it will take years to recover from the COVID effects in our community, how do you envision using your position to assist Latino businesses to recover from this disproportionate impact of COVID-19 towards this sector?
Number one. I, the people I know who come from that Latinx background are amazingly resilient. I have often thought that my own children, I just wish you had some of that resiliency. I think you've been spoiled a little bit, because I know so many people that I work with currently now and in my business, that they, what they tell me they have been through, it's like, why are you still here? And they have done so well. One person I know who actually is undocumented. One person I know who actually is undocumented, very, very close friend of mine, and she owns two homes. I don't know many kids of my children's age who can do that. So number one, it's a resilient community and any help we can give them, I think will be paid back more than double. You are models for us all, and I'm not just saying that to be nice, but that's something that I, I definitely believe. In terms of what we should do, that's what leadership is for. I don't think we know what is needed exactly right now, but we need to listen and we need to go out to all of these different communities and cultures and little neighborhoods and say, what do you need? What can we do to help? We have to ask them, we don't have the answers. I think, as you can see from our group up here, we have to be alert and listen.
Thank you for that. Cindy, okay, so John, you are next, and the question is, knowing that it will take years to recover from the COVID effects in our community, how do you envision using your position to assist Latino businesses to recover from the disproportionate impacts of COVID-19 towards this sector?
Thank you for asking that question as well. I mean, we, we know that our frontline communities and communities that have been disequitably and unequitably affected historically are even, it's, it's been exacerbated by COVID-19. And so I'm not just gonna talk about what I am going to do, I'm gonna talk about what we actually did this year at the legislature. And the short answer might be not enough, but here's what we did do, and here's what I would do as your county commissioner, is I would make sure that whatever new federal relief dollars come down, that we are able to funnel those through nonprofit organizations and other private organizations that maybe don't have the same level of red tape that our county and state government have. Because when we passed those bills this year on economic recovery and human services and healthcare recovery, what we did is we figured out if we're able to get those through nonprofit private organizations, they can not only serve Latino communities and people of color, but even our undocumented population, which has even been harder hit than any other component to make sure that they get the cash assistance that everyone else is already getting to business assistance across the board. And so that's the lens that I'm gonna be approaching this with, is the experience that I've had at the Capitol and using that same strategy, if new federal and new state dollars come down, to get those to those organizations that are efficient, quick and responsive to communities where trust has already been built.
Well, thank you, Jonathan. You were done?
I'm good.
Yes, good, thank you. Okay, Martha, it's your turn. And Martha, to repeat the question for you is, knowing that it will take years to recover from the COVID effects in our community, how do you envision using your position to assist Latino businesses to recover from the disproportionate impacts of COVID-19 towards this sector?
That's a really important question, and, and frankly, I think that we aren't talking about how significant these disproportionate effects of COVID-19 truly are, creating bigger issues than we're even knowledgeable about. And I say that because from being in the mortgage crisis, being laid off myself during the mortgage crisis, working with families from state policies and state programs that were created during that time, I was on the ground with community members and Spanish-speaking family, families who were then having to modify their loans, who were losing their homes in foreclosure, that, et cetera. And the same thing in the flood recovery, that we were working three years after the flood. It is truly an afterthought of how we locally, and that was from the state of Colorado's response to asking what happened to vulnerable populations. There's two pieces there that concern me when we connect what's happening now with COVID, and one of them is around mental health. We haven't yet had a conversation about how this is mentally affecting folks from an emotional standpoint, the fear, the reality of losing jobs, the, there's a whole lot of effects. And so employer assistance programs, I want to see that from a commissioner administrative role, use that in a new way and make sure that all employees have access to. And I also believe that one of the piece, first pieces is gonna be working with the 2,000 Boulder County employees, because they're on the ground.
Ten seconds.
This, and they have the understanding, the same way a lot of us that have been working in the community, about what the true needs are specific to business and small business.
Thank you, Martha. Okay, good, so that is the end of our round for question number three. Moving on to question number four, Cindy, you are going to go first. And question number four for you, Cindy, is, how would you propose to clo, to help close the wealth gap between low-income and minority Boulder County residents versus the rest of the county? You're on mute.
Um, there is a gap. We all know there is a gap. I feel the gap, and I'm not even on the low end. I mean, there's, there's just such a range of it, and it is unfair. I've talked with people about this, and it's, it's really tricky. I think one of the things we can do is being an educator is education. We have got to get our youth, our, our Latinx groups, you know, and there's other groups too that are ethnically, you know, in the minority, we need to get everybody the education we need. And I don't feel like we are. I know that very often the parents, especially if their dominant language is not the language that we are using, they're a little hesitant. And yet, when you reach out to them, they are often the most responsive, the most willing to bend over backwards to get their kids what they need. And then we have to realize that not only does this happen with children, it's also with adults, that often adults aren't given what they need to, to advance themselves. So they just say, hey, this is what I've always done.
Ten seconds.
Um, this is what I've always done. I've actually taken an adult in that situation and walked him right up into CU admissions and said, this is what you gotta do.
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy. John, you are next. The question reads, how would you propose to help close the wealth gap between low-income and minority Boulder County residents versus the rest of the county?
You know, I, I want to first, you know, recognize because about what I'm about to say, my own white privilege, and say that I've received a lot of benefits that other people never got and never got held back the way other people might have gotten held back because of the color of their skin or their gender or their gender expression. At the same time, I remember what it was like two years ago when my landlord doubled my rent, and I didn't know if I was gonna be able to live in the community that I had been elected to represent. And so I think what we need to do in Boulder County is double down on affordable housing, affordable childcare, and the kinds of things that people have been disproportionately affected in, in our Latinx communities, our African-American community, our Native American community. And then on top of that, I want to start partnering with our skilled trades and, and union labor. You know, I, I've worked with the pipe fitters and skilled trade unions through our workforce development center. We can bring those skilled trade unions in, and we actually have started to see wealth gaps close when people take good, strong, sustainable union jobs. And so I think these are the opportunities that we need to recognize and take advantage of. And, and last but not least, I, I think that it's also making sure that everyone can get affordable healthcare and using the county bullhorn and our policies to support people. So some of the biggest cost drivers, the biggest bankruptcy driver is healthcare, and we're gonna work to end that disparity as well.
Thank you, Jonathan. Martha, it's your turn. And Martha, how would you propose to help close the wealth gap between low-income and minority Boulder County residents versus the rest of the county?
So working on addressing the wealth gap is something I've been involved in for the last 20 years through my career, and I have been a member of an organization called the National Association of Hispanic Real Estate Professionals during that time. I'm a national trainer for the Hispanic Wealth Project. That education that I do for professors, for students, for community around the state, actually of Colorado, is focusing on that exact data from 2014, that in this country, the average net worth of a Hispanic family compared to, and that's the, the demographic terminology, is significant, it's 10 times different than what white families in this country as, on an average experience. And we see that data here in Boulder County too, it's just very disproportionate. And so that's some of the work that I've been using. I do agree with Cindy that there's some education from the role of county commissioner, sitting in an office, doing administrative job. First things first is how can I use that financial literacy to open up opportunities for staff or employees so that they are in a healthy, financially healthy, financially stable, understand their para, understand all of their different opportunities, housing, budget, financial programs that do exist in our county, but as a county admin, how can I reach, push that information out, broaden the scope of who gets that access, start addressing wealth gap in a significant way here locally, and then influence out?
Thank you, Martha. Okay, and Claire, you are next. I'll read the question again. How do you propose to help close the wealth gap between low-income and minority Boulder County residents versus the rest of the county?
That is really the question of our time, I think, on the local level, state level, national level. I think it's really important to distinguish between wealth and income. And wealth is what you can draw on when you want to help your kid go to college, when you want to maybe take out a loan and start your own business, when, when times get tough, like we're seeing now, and, and people don't have savings, they, they, 40% of the people in this country, I don't know the figures for Boulder County specifically, but, but don't have enough savings to weather any kind of a financial emergency. Primarily, wealth in, in our country comes from homeownership, and it comes from retirement savings. And the, the disparity between white and people of color is, is stark, and it's growing worse. And that's a reflection of completely misplaced priorities. I think Jonathan is absolutely correct, that stronger union, unions would help, because that's the ticket to a good income, to retirement savings, to good healthcare. But I, I also think there's, there's something we're missing here, which has been tried, and I think Jonathan, you had a hand in this perhaps, child savings accounts, where, you know, kids start out with something that, that can be added to, and maybe it's only $50 a month. But we have to help people of color start building wealth so that they can get, use that as a springboard to a future opportunity for their children.
Thank you, Claire. Okay. All right, so I think that is the end of question four. Thank you, everybody, for your great answers. On to question nine, five, John, you will go first this time. Question number five is, how would you ensure parity for Latino businesses in bidding for contracting and vending services of Boulder County?
Thank you for that question, and once again, this is something that we've tackled at the state level, and we're beginning to finally address, and I think we can do a huge copy and paste from what's going on there. We're relooking at our procurement code at the state level, because we know that there have been disparities. It is unfair, and, you know, the same people have been getting the same benefits o, o, over and over again, and that doesn't really lead to innovation. And so this is an opportunity that we have to copy and paste what I've helped create at the state level with other lawmakers like State Senator Angela Williams, to redo and reevaluate our procurement code, to do the right kind of research, to see where the problems are, who's getting the, who's getting the contracts now, and where we can start working together again. And last but not least, it also, you know, this is gonna sound like an advertisement, begins a lot with talking to the Latino Chamber of Commerce and, and continuing those conversations and bringing those, those voices in, because this is a situation where we can use research to inform and then change the face of our system permanently.
Okay, John, well, thank you for that. Martha, it's your turn, you're next, and the question reads, how would you ensure parity, sorry, how, how would you ensure parity for Latino businesses in bidding for contracting and vending services of Boulder County?
That's a really important question. We're through the, through NARAP that I mentioned already in the past, what we've done for our members, because we're all self-employed. We work in the housing industry in different facets, focusing on first-time homebuyers, focusing, focusing on exactly what we're talking about today is this wealth gap, and how do we help specifically our Hispanic, Latino, Latinx demographic in the state of Colorado access homeownership, access gap, down payment assistance access, and create different policies that we've gone to the Capitol and the US Capitol and lobbied for, against border wall funding and, and addressing different issues around credit financing that directly affects our small business community. So when we talk about parity in, what we did there was we brought in, for example, CDOT and did trainings from CDOT to show our membership and all of our clients, our small business clients, our community folks, what is the actual process? And I think we could replicate that in a really fantastic way with government contracts as well, so that folks even have the, the information. When I was working at the city of Longmont and putting together RFP, for example, the state requirement and that application process is obscene. How do we, as a government agency and a county commissioner administrative, see, how do we create some programs so that it's just processes that we can join in with Latino Chamber and other chambers in the to hear what are, what are different ways that we can be sharing this type of information so that we can open up those doors and get contracts to folks who also deserve them and are doing amazing work?
Thank you, Martha. Okay, so Claire is next, and Claire, how would you ensure parity for Latino businesses in bidding for contracting and vending services of Boulder County?
So I'm gonna start my answer with something that, that Martha said, which is, I think I would start by going to the Latino Chamber of Commerce of Boulder County and say, what do you see as the obstacles? But I think, I think I, I, I also can draw from my experience in the state legislature when we were told over and over and over again that the state procurement process was so Byzantine, it was so complicated, that really only a very few companies could even dream of submitting a response to an RFP. And, you know, you have, you have to, you have to reverse engineer this thing, take it apart and start all over again and say, well, what do we really need as contract requirements? And, and what have, what do we have because we've always done it? So we probably got requirements for insurance that may be over and above what is needed for the particular project that's being built, bid on. But I think the county can have, can have something called, like a navigator system, where, you know, where they help decode the, this foreign language that is so often used in RFPs, you know, let's decode this, let's make this simple and understandable so that everybody, even if you don't have a dedicated consultant and, and employer, I mean employee, who's always done government bidding, let's make it, let's make it accessible. So I think I, you know, I want to listen to the community and find out what the obstacles are, and, and then just make it, make it simple and accessible. We, we need to employ local businesses.
Well, thank you for that, Claire. And let's see, Cindy, you are next. Question number five, how would you ensure parity for Latino businesses in bidding for contracting and vending services of Boulder County?
Well, you know, as I've, I've had time to think about this one, and one of the first things that came to mind is that I think a lot of people in general believe, oh, if you're gonna give them special consideration, then they must be inferior. And I think we need, one of the first things we need is that psychology of, you know, just because you've got a different last name or a slightly different culture, doesn't mean you work inferiorly. I've heard that, and I think that's one thing we gotta work on, that psychology. Right now, I can't think of a way of doing that, but I know it can be done. The next thing I would like to hit on, and I think this goes to what Claire had said, is that we have to not only encourage people to apply, we gotta get out the info. It's not, you know, like I know with my business, it's like, well, where do I find this? You know, and you go to the library, or you go and people say, I don't know where it is. So you don't even know if something's out there to apply for. So we gotta do better about getting that info out. And as Claire said, we not only need to get it out, but filling out these forms. I have a PhD and I have trouble filling out forms, and I think, is it me? And then I think everybody needs this help, so that's what I would do.
Well, thank you, Claire, for that. Well, thank you, Claire, for that. I love every answer that you guys have given us today. I'll give you my, my own personal thoughts about everything and everything I've heard today. I believe there are three tracks that we can all help our, our Hispanic community. And all you guys have mentioned in one way or another throughout the conversation. You have the political track, you have the media track, then you have the education track. And, and if you can picture this in your head and, and take it with you for the rest of your time working in the community, I think we can all do great things for, for the minority and Latino communities. So with that, let's move on to our last part of the program, which is your closing remarks. Each one of you guys will have also 90 seconds to, to say thank you and, and offer your closing remarks here. And right, and this time we get to start with Martha, following our, the system we've had so far. So Martha, please go ahead and 90 seconds.
Great. Yeah. So again, thanks to the Boulder County Latino Chamber of Commerce for bringing us together and having this conversation. This is actually some new topics from a candidate forum, so it's really great. I wanted to share that, to, to really put into perspective what this job is. I think it's super important. And again, I invite folks to look at my website, martha2020.org. The actual role of county commissioner truly is in that office, running, overseeing, and for me, a more transparent and accountable allocation of this 430 million budget, as well as oversight management, support of our 2,000 Boulder County employees, so that we can then better serve all of the other 330,000 residents in Boulder County. And so I share that just to kind of put back into perspective, and that I'm running for the primary on June 30th. Here's two things that I want to just be really clear about. We only have three seats in the Boulder County Commissioner's Office. And District, District Three is already there, they're in the middle of their term. Matt Jones is a previous state legislator. District One, Claire Levy is running, unopposed right now for the primary, and she does have a previous state legislator background and that experience. And so for District Two, we have this amazing opportunity to use a very unique lens that specifically for this conference is focused around our Latino community, that again, is 30% of the city that I live in. That is a new perspective that will help round out that board of commissioners to making all these really important decisions.
Thank you, Martha. Claire, you are next. 30 seconds or 90 seconds?
Okay, thank you. Well, so that I don't run out of time, I want to start by thanking the Latino Chamber of Commerce again for hosting this and bringing us together. I think it really is important for, for you to hear from us and for us to hear your questions, because we learn, I learn about the community by the questions that you ask. So I, I want to, I want to reemphasize my priorities as a county commissioner. I've, I've talked a lot about affordable housing. I've been working on the Board of Boulder Housing Partners and as a legislator and as a nonprofit executive director, and somebody who set, set the strategic vision of our organization. Housing is the bedrock for all economic security. And I think that that's something we really need to focus on here in Boulder County. That's, that's the platform by which people succeed in education. It's the platform by which they can maintain a steady job. It's a platform by which they can actually have health, mental health and physical health. And so that's, that's going to be my number one priority. We've had other forums in which we've talked about the importance of protecting our environment, and I'm not going to review that again here. I have a long track record in that regard. But what I haven't had a chance to talk about is, is my heartfelt commission, commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion. I think that that is how we rebuild our society in a more just and equitable way.
Thank you, Claire. Let's see, Cindy, you are next, and 90 seconds.
Um, what I would like to say to end is that I am running because I want to unite the county. I just feel the divisiveness that we've all experienced. I think we all feel it in our core anymore. Divisiveness among peoples, among colors of people, among ethnicities, among classes. We've hit on all of that. And I have done that my entire life, not because I got paid to do that, but because that's who I am. I'm also a very positive person, and I believe that all of these different peoples that we have, including the land, different geography. I just saw a hailstorm move right through here. It was very distracting, by the way, where I'm sitting. But to bring us all together, I think it can be win-win. It's the Latinas, the Latinos, the Latinx, that everybody that you want to talk about, it's win-win for us all when we work together. I would get out of the courthouse, that Stadio building, and get around to all the different parts of the community, from the far west where I am, to the far eastern plains, and bring us all together, bring us all together by finding out the parts that we have. Right now, it's like
Ten seconds.
our central, central Boulder. I'd also like for you to check out my webpage, which isn't up yet, but I wrote a wonderful immigration story that I'm going to put up there. I wrote it about four years ago. I'd love to use, for you to read it.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you very much. And lastly, John, you are next. 90 seconds.
Thank you. Thank you, Ricardo. Thank you, Pete. Thank you, Bernice. And thank you to Cindy, Claire and Martha for being part of the conversation with all of us today. You know, I want to close on a statement that a friend of mine once told me. You know, you said, Jonathan, it doesn't just matter where you come from, but it's where you're going and who you're taking with you. You know, I'm a social worker who worked with families that were experiencing homelessness and needing jobs. And then I ran because I was tired of the government getting in the way of helping people's lives, and we made government work for people that never had an opportunity in the first place. And where I'm going is hopefully to build on those successes and make it work even better at the local level, where we can actually implement these programs, decarcerate our jails, redirect our budget towards investing in people instead of punishing people, and at the same time, addressing our housing crisis and our climate crisis. And so I hope that where I come from is a place of social work, and where I'm going is a place of better justice for everyone. And I hope you all join me, and we all come through this together. Thanks again to the Latino Chamber. And I look forward to seeing all of you at the polls by June 30th. Take care.
Thank you, Jonathan, for that answer. Pete? Well, with that, we're done with questions. We're done with closing statements. And, and Pete, why don't you give us a few parting words before we sign off? You're on mute. Pete, you're on mute. 90 seconds.
I just wanted to, again, thank all the candidates. I know it's, it's a busy hectic time. I appreciate your time, your thoughtfulness and your answers. Want to thank those of you who've joined us via Facebook or our Zoom platform here. Just remind people that the chamber is engaged in a lot of really great work. And I would encourage you to come to our website to see what we're doing. If you're not a member, we have, we have various membership levels that come with certain benefits. But it's, you know, I, I believe firmly that if, if we want to create wealth in our community, if we want to create the jobs that we need, that we need to, we need to be part of our Latino business community and support the fastest-growing economic sector in the United States, and that's the Latino-Chicano business community. So please, please check us out again. Thank you. Thank Ricardo, Bernice, the team. I work with these wonderful people. I said, thank you so much. And that's, that's it for me. I appreciate your, your time. Thank you.
Okay. Bueno amigos, muchas gracias. Agradecemos a los candidatos que tuvieron el tiempo para venir a conversar con nosotros. Como dijo nuestro presidente, pízalas. Por favor revisen la página de la cámara de comercio latina del condado de Boulder para que aprendan más sobre los beneficios y las oportunidades que les podemos ofrecer. Muchas gracias a todos los que nos acompañaron en Zoom y Facebook. Muy buenas tardes.
Thank you, everybody. So before you go, I have a surprise question. It's just a five-second answer, whatever you like. So we can finish on a light, light fare, an easy question. So I will start with Claire. Claire, just unmute yourselves and everybody. You can do that too, so I don't have to worry about too many buttons here in front of me. Claire, what profession, other than your own, would you like to attempt?
You know, I love sewing, and I would love to be a costume sewer for a theater company.
Oh, wow. That, I'm expected.
That's a surprise, isn't it?
I don't know. Yeah, yeah. Okay, Cindy, what, what profession, other than your own, would you like to attempt? And you're muted, by the way. Still muted.
Okay, there we go. Number one, Claire, I'll hire you. I'm trying to find seamstresses, and it's very, very difficult. But anyway, so you can be part of my business here. The profession I've always wanted to do is writing. And I thought when I retired, I've got all these things I've got. And the next thing I know, I'm not writing, but I'm starting a business. And it's like, where did that come from? But anyway.
Okay, John?
Well, after social distancing and staying at home, I think I'm ready to become a professional rock climber.
Nice. Martha, what profession, other than yours, would you like to attempt?
That's actually a tough one, because I've had so many different types of jobs. I've had two or three jobs my entire adult life, so I feel like I may have tried all of them. But I would probably go back actually to waitressing and waiting tables, because it's so interactive and it's physical activity, and you meet so much people, and it, different people, and have great conversations. That's my quick reaction.
All right, good. Well, let me surprise Pete and ask him the same question. What profession, other than yours, would you like to attempt?
Well, I don't know. You know, I, I, I think about that a lot sometimes, and, you know, I just think about the old, when I was a boy, they used to have the, the Good Humor Man movies. You know, and the guy would come sell that ice cream to the kids, and they'd all, they, they get excited, and kids get all excited. I don't know. I, like Martha, have done a lot of, been involved in a lot of projects in my career, interesting things. So, but, you know, I, I would love to be a musician. I have no, no talent, but other.
Yeah.
I'd like to change tracks. I would, I would take music lessons.
All right. Bernice?
I, I love being an engineer, but if I have a chance, I would love to be an economist.
An economist? Okay, wow. Yeah. And just to be fair, I'm going to ask myself the same question. And I would love to be a golf coach, or I am already a golf coach, but I'd love to do that, or, and a musician. So if I could do one on the weekdays and one on the weekends for the rest of my life, that would be paradise for me. So with that, okay, let's all wave. Thank you for coming.
Can I say?
Thank you.
Pete, my brother brought a Good Humor Man cart on the internet. Used. They're cheap.
All right, everybody. Good evening. Thank you for coming. Until next time.
Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you.